...in here. Hang on one second, I'll handle this. We have, we have Wreckin Parks as the lead agency, followed by planning, followed by Department of Transportation. We have Director Moore, Director Porcel, and I don't know who's here from planning. Someone from planning, please raise your hand. Thank you. Director Moore, please come up to the lecture and get started.
And, um, spend the night before, what can you tell your graduates not watching?
I need someone to get started. I'm six minutes behind schedule. Folks, folks, someone please get started for me. Thank you, Director Moore, I appreciate that. If you could run through your slide in under four minutes. Run through your slide, and then, and then we'll go into questions. Before you start, can you introduce everyone who's here from your agency, say their name, say their position title, and ask them to either stand or raise their hand, just so our colleagues up here on the council know. Real quick, to my left, Councilman Leon Pinkett, Vice Chair of the Committee, 7th District. Councilman Yitche Slifer, 5th District, Member of the Committee. Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, 14th District. Councilman Zeke Cohen, 1st District. Councilman Brandon Scott, 2nd District, Member of the Committee. To my right, Councilwoman Sharon Green Milton, Vice President of the Council, 6th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District. Councilman John Bullock, 9th District. Director Moore, please take it away.
Good morning, Councilman Castello, and fellow council members. Thank you for having us here this morning. I will start by introducing my staff that I have. I have Eric Deal, who is Chief of Forestry. Ken King, who's our Chief of Physical. Bill Von der Sack, who's our Deputy Director in Parks. Bob Wall, who's our Chief of Recreation. Dave Carter, who is our Park, Chief of Park Maintenance. Rashawn Brave, who's Chief of Youth and Adult Sports. Alan Bormerman, who's Chief of Capital. Jenny Morgan, who's Executive Assistant to our Deputy of Parks. Darrell Sutton, who is Recreation and Aquatics Chief. We have Bob Signal, Signal, who's Therapeutic Chief. Sierra Harris, who's our Chief of Staff/Deputy of Administration. Aljena Green, who is Operating, sorry, Operation Officer of Human Resources. Teresa Millie, who's Chief of Human Resource. And Sheree Lee, who is one of our administrators in our Parks Division. Alright, so, real quick, Park Maintenance. As you can see, we're, our funding level this year is requesting 14,637,479. The service is responsible for maintaining the 4,600 parkland spaces to include Jewel Hill Park, our historic Mount Vernon, other neighborhoods and playgrounds. Of course, some of the budget highlights is we do receive funding through the state for our Public Open Space Fund, as well as we, this year, making a slight adjustment so we can help address our Violence Reduction Initiative. Also, as you all know, we're in the process of putting, building a new Mount Wyandotte Nature Center for 132,000, so we'll ask them for funding, well, we have funding there for that, as well as 135,000 to support new ball fields as they come online. The next one we'll talk about is our Forestry. Of course, our Forest Division is responsible for general masons of our city streets and park trees, including inspecting the trees, removing pruning trees, watering and mulching. Some of the highlights there is we did decrease roughly 250,000 in that budget item to help support some of our recreational opportunity, Recreation Center operations. Overall, we feel we've identified the sources that's needed to continue to prune trees as well as deal with our dying Emerald Ash Bore trees as well. So, that's kind of a quick overview of those two line areas, and I guess we'll now open up for any questions.
Thank you, Director Moore. Got you. Just had a question related to Service, Item 654, Forestry. One of the performance measures as relates to outcome, related to tree canopy cover, has our FY '17 target being 28 percent, and then the actual for FY '17 is 28 percent, and then for FY '18 and '19, it remains at 28 percent. Is that, have we reached the threshold, or why, why is that our, if we've achieved that, why is that our target?
I mean, right now, what we're trying to do when it comes to our tree canopy, is we're still finding additional areas that we can plant more trees to improve our tree canopy overall. One of the highlights, and Eric can witness this, is we saw, is a 2 percent increase.
You have to, you have to use the mic, Eric.
Use that mic. Right, so...
It's on, it's on.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So, no, 20 percent, 28 percent is not our ultimate goal. Back in the, in the aughts, our goal was set at 40 percent tree canopy cover by the year 2037, and we have not yet changed that. Why we didn't show an increase from one fiscal year to the next most recently is we have this little green critter called Emerald Ash Bore, and he's going to take out hundreds of thousands of trees, so it would have been a little bit disingenuous for me to go ahead and say we're going to get to 29 percent in the next year or two. But, we really bucked the trend. Very few major metropolitan areas across the United States had an increase in, in tree canopy cover. Baltimore is one of the few, so, we're proud of that.
So, what do you anticipate the Emerald, Emerald Ash Bore, how many, what percentage of trees do you anticipate them taking out? I think it says 300 and something? So, what percentage?
There's a couple hundred thousand Ash Bore totally in the entire city, on city property, right away in developed parkland, there's between 4 and 5,000. And because of a budget enhancement we received a couple of years ago, we're working on removing most of those trees and replacing with resistant species. We are treating the 500 top most valuable ash trees. The rest, we're going to phase them out and replace them.
Okay. So, essentially, this 28 percent might be even an increase over what we've done in previous years because we're maintaining the, the current canopy.
Right, I'm a little surprised. We did buck the trend. We increased. Now, we'll have to, when the reevaluation's done by Forest Service, we're going to have to see whether or not we're going to be able to increase in the next two, three years, or whether we're going to have to tread water a bit until we get past this Emerald Ash Bore problem.
Okay. Councilman Slifer?
Yes. Sorry, got something in my throat. Thank you. So, I got a couple of questions for you, Director Moore. How many rec centers are there in Baltimore City?
Currently, there's 43.
Forty-three. And is there any council district besides my own that does not have any recreational center, or city pool, or something like that?
Um, I know your, your district has parks. I know Councilman Dorsey, I mean, it does have parks in it, but I'm thinking of rec centers. No, I know Councilman Dorsey has swimming pools, but he doesn't have an active rec center in his district as well, so...
So, he's got pools. So, my district's the only...
So, Councilman Slifer?
Have a splash hat.
Just, just one, one brief moment. We will be dealing with the entirety of Wreckin Parks issues in a, in a subsequent panel. If we can, I know this is a pressing question, but if we can focus on the maintenance and the urban forestry for this particular panel?
Alright, so, I will, I'll resume that question a little bit later on. I guess that's going to also prevent my next question, so I'll, I'll jump right into, to stumps then. So, first of all, I think you guys, Eric, you're doing a phenomenal job, and I appreciate the work that you're doing out there, the limited, limited resources you have. One of the things I noticed in the budget highlights on page 421, is that there's, the budget includes $300,000 to support recreational centers. Additional two of the centers, Lilian Jones and Rita Church, will operate as a curfew center during the summer, closing at 12:00 AM. So, from the press release and news reports of what the mayor put out as far as the curfews, it's my understanding, based on that, that there will be no curfew centers, and rather, BPD will be driving anybody violating curfew home. Is that, is that correct? Is that your understanding?
So, excuse me, Councilman Slifer, so is this question related to park maintenance and urban forestry?
Yeah, well, it's all part of it, yeah. It will be.
Okay. I, I, I want to see this tied into green infrastructure.
I got you.
Okay.
I got you.
Alright.
To answer your question, and I'm, I'm looking at the page you're talking about now, but, the, the transfer involves more than just Lilian Jones and Rita Church for VRI, our curfew centers. As far as when it comes to stumps, I think it's probably one of your questions, what are we doing to address that?
No, no, I'm not there yet. My question is, are these, are these centers being open as curfew centers?
From my understanding, I believe there's, there's not going to be curfew centers, but those two sites are also VRI sites. So, they are open extended hours until 11 o'clock on Fridays, and right now, midnight on Saturdays. Both of those sites are.
Got you. So, the, so the curfew piece is, is just incorrect, okay? Because what I was getting at, and how I was tying it in, was that, that's generally about the sum that I'd like the administration, it's unfortunate that, that the mayor's team left us for this important piece, but when they come back in, I'll reiterate it, but that the, you know, that we find a way to make sure that we stump, that we fund the removal of all the stumps in the city now. Whether we make that a one-year project or a two-year project, that'll be up to you guys on how you feel the capacity will handle it. I know you guys just got a new bright shiny stump grinder, and certainly, we can look at getting additional ones if that's necessary, but being that you guys have done tremendous work on the inventory of the stumps and of the trees, and you have the data that unfortunately, many other agencies don't have the data here, at least, we can methodically go ahead and actually deal with the problem. So, I'd like to see that we look at some of these things and find a way to get that added to the budget, and that's something that I put in as a budget priority, and I'll reiterate it when, when our liaisons come back into the room.
Got you. And to my colleagues, at 11, the 11 o'clock panel, we'll be able to get the full presentation as it relates to Wreckin Parks. So, in the meantime, can we focus our questions on green infrastructure? So, Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you. Okay, we're on green infrastructure, right?
Yes.
Okay. I am concerned that, and maybe I'm reading the numbers wrong, but that, for, urban forestry, which is under street tree planting and maintenance in particular, is down 1.2 million dollars from the current year in overall urban forestry, and that it is down, let's see, 370,000-some dollars under the, the street tree planting and maintenance activity, plus, it's also down in contractual services by about 450,000, all from this year, if I'm reading the budget correctly, which means we're getting whacked in urban forestry, and we don't even have contractual, the level of contractual help to come in, and I don't know what's going on, but I hope I've made a terrible mistake.
If you notice, there was a $700,000 transfer. You want to explain why that?
I know about the $700,000 transfer, and I, I know that's a special case. I'm talking about, so, yeah, that adds up to what's missing from urban forests because it got transferred away, but that's coming from a special fund.
That's correct.
But, not, and that's part of the 1.3 million loss to the major category of urban forestry, but then when you get down to, so, it's gone. It's, I don't know, I forget the reason. It's a...
Councilwoman Clark, I can account for the 700,000. I think the way the budget's set up, correct me if I'm wrong, Philip, we, we go ahead and show what we're projecting we're going to get as far as revenues or...
Yeah.
...funding coming in, and it included a pitch we made for a $700,000 DNR grant that we did not get. So, that 700,000 was kind of on, in paper only.
They were general funds, I think.
It showed up in general funds, that's true.
I, I, they sure did.
Now, Councilwoman Clark, if you look at page...
Oh, I got it, I got it. Just tell me what...
457, the $700,000 was state money.
Yes.
And so, that was the pitch, it wasn't the general fund.
I saw that happen. That's, that goes into the overall loss, but that's, now get down to the work of street tree planting and maintenance, and you'll see at least $300,000 less coming up next year from what we've even have today, which is ridiculous, plus, it's not like you can go to contractual workers, because that's cut under that category as well. That is a category under urban forestry that is also cut. What page are we on? Does anyone know? I'm doing this from memory.
457, 458.
What?
458.
458? Okay, thanks. But, I, I know what it says. And it mean, what it says is, good luck, everybody, if you want to keep the canopy going, if you want to pick up some more stump removal machines, or volunteers to use them. We're, we're losing ground, and it's something that is very, of great importance in the city, and what's up?
Council, Councilwoman Clark, I feel confident that, that where we are having to shift some money to our rec centers, that there's other funds that's available, that we're still going to continue to plant trees, as well in the city.
Well, I know we're going to plant trees, Mr. Moore, and that's one of, very exciting. We have volunteers that help us. It's a whole partnership that's been developed very, very well over the last several years by forestry. What I'm saying is, we're backsliding, and we're backsliding specifically in urban forestry, and then very specifically within that category, in street tree planting and maintenance. And yes, there's that money, the 700,000, it's gone. So, I don't expect to see that back, but I don't expect to see this program losing this much money in the environment we're living in, which is like Tree City, like, we got the canopy. We beat them all. And it's not just like we're having, it's not like we don't need that canopy before we, if it ever gets warm again, it's going to then get hot, and we know what that does to the environment. And it'll probably happen in 24 hours, 48 at the most. And then, we're into, oh my gosh, it's so hot, and this neighborhood doesn't have trees, et cetera. That's why we are doing the canopy. That's why it's a huge civic project that everybody in the world is involved in, and that's why my colleague wants us to be able to get the stumps up so that we can get the trees in on schedule, and this is a program that's getting cut. Thank you. I need the money back in that program, or we'll have every environmentalist here for second reader. I mean, we need this program.
Councilman Scott?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Moore, I'll start, and actually, this isn't really for you. I just think that, that with Wreckin Parks budget already being a lot smaller than it should be, the simple fact that you guys had to transfer $78,000 over to the VRI for Wreckin Parks is just ridiculous to me. That money could have came from somewhere else. We know if the police department needed $78,000, they would have had it in a nanosecond. So, I just want to be on the record first in saying that. But, Mr., Director Moore, can you talk a, a little bit more about something that Councilman Dorsey and I talk about a lot, about basketball courts? And how many we have, how many we should have, how much does it cost to renovate one versus build one, and what, what the status or condition of most of our basketball courts are throughout the city?
We have 110 outdoor basketball courts throughout our city. There's quite a bit of them that, that need some renovation upgrades. You can go as low as, I guess, roughly about 25,000 to maybe just resurface the court, but if it's severely cracked or those things, then you're probably looking at, oh, it's maybe $100,000, because you're going to need to remove that asphalt and replace it, because if not putting, just sealing it, doesn't solve your problem, because next, when the sun comes back out, it's going to expose those cracks again. So, we're, but what we're doing as an agency is, is we're trying, trying to do a better job of balancing our capital budget to look at our existing facilities. I know there's been plans for some larger facilities, which, those larger facilities come with a big ticket, when we talk about fitness and wellness centers. And so, what we're, I'm challenging our agency to do is to start looking at how we can balance new with old. Let's, let's start taking care of some of the things that are existing, and maybe we slow down on some of our new construction.
Mr. Chair, can, can, and Director Moore, this is really, really for us to have a better sense and be able to advocate for, for the agency appropriately. Could you, Mr. Chair, could we add this to the request list? Could you guys send us a list of the basketball courts in the city in a map? And if you can, add to that the last time they've been renovated or upgraded at all? Because I see in the budget that it says you guys are getting $100,000 for basketball court and tennis court repairs, but if one court will cost us $100,000, and we have a bunch of them, we all, we know what we will not be doing throughout the city. A second question is related...
Councilman Scott, can I add to that?
Yes.
Is, is there a metrics that Wreckin Parks uses for the condition of the court? Like, if, if you send an inspector out with a, you know, say, poor, good, you know, excellent condition, I mean, are there, is there an analysis like that?
There are standards, and I'll yield to our masons team to go in more details, but we are working on a more preventive maintenance program.
Okay. Because if there is, well, I'm, I'm going to assume that there is something like that, and I'd like to add to Councilman Scott's request, that, that list also not just reflect last time it was inspected, but also what the, what they, what the rate or current status of that particular court is.
Okay.
Councilman Scott?
Thank you. Director Moore, to, on a similar vein, can you, can we do the same exact thing for fields? Ball fields and ball field maintenance?
Back in the motion.
Because I think that, as you know, as someone who uses our, our fields often on weekends to display my athletic prowess, I think that we, we know, we know that, that we have some fields that are in great condition, and some that aren't, that need, that need a lot of work. But if we could have a dollar amount, and we know that you guys have a plan to deal with that, but if you could share that with us so that we can, can fight for the agency and fight for the agency's ability to improve that, because when we talk about what we want to do in Baltimore, and the ultimate goal is have a vibrant city for all, but also a safe city for all, we know that recreational activity and leisure activity for people is something that, that ties in directly with that. I'm done, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Thank you. Good, I guess it's still morning. Good morning. How, how long have you been director? How many, has it been a year yet?
No, ma'am, it's been eight months.
Okay, well, congratulations to you first. There has been progress. You came in starting, and things have been moving along wonderfully, and I'd like to thank you for that. I also like to thank Eric Deal for his advocacy on working with the 21st Century Schools and the planting, that is moving along, so, thank you for that. And then also, thank you for continuing the partnership at the Silburn Arboretum with the Silburn Association and programming and things there, as well as the many new rec centers like CC Jackson is moving along as well. I guess one green infrastructure question. Has the collection of stormwater fees had any impact on your ability to implement green infrastructure initiatives?
You want to answer that, Ken, or Adam? Anybody? Can we, we'll, let us do some research.
Okay.
And we'll get that answer back to you.
Okay. And then, I understand there's...
Did we notate, did we notate what the question is?
Um, has, has the collection of stormwater fees had an impact on their ability to implement green infrastructure initiatives?
Okay.
And then, I understand there is an encouragement of creating canopies, but we do get calls in about tree limbs that obstruct the view of city signs and lights. Is there a pruning priority in place for that?
Eric, you want to talk and highlight how you're starting to hit neighborhoods with the pruning program?
Yes, there is a priority for that. If it's a block stop sign, a, a street light, red, yellow, green light, we do prioritize that. We, we query for that in our software program that we use, it's called City Works, and sometimes it ties into the VRI initiative. And I have a person who's, one of her primary jobs is to work closely with the police and with Scott Stanfield in our, in our department, and so there, there's, sometimes there's bleed over from that, and, and we're doing camera work at the same time, there might be stop sign work. So, yes, we do prioritize that.
Okay. And there, I think there's also a need for lights on the field at Bryce's Town in Woodland that, that's used actively by many sports teams as well. Saints Football Team is one that are champions every year. And then, lastly, I, I heard from the Labor Commissioner at the previous hearing, I got a little emotional there because of my sensitivity to trying to push apprenticeships, and she did mention something about a tree pruning apprenticeship? Is that true?
Eric, you want to talk about it?
Please.
And maybe Dave Carter of our Park Maintenance Chief can get into it more, but yes, there is a program, we're looking into it. My understanding, the challenge is, and I'd love to be corrected if I'm wrong, we need to take a current vacancy to put into that in order to have somebody go through that training, apprenticeship program. That means it would take one of my much-needed vacancies to keep my regular tree crew going, but we're very interested in that. And we've done it before, as you probably know, many years ago.
Yes.
Some of, some of my folks now working for me, they came up through an apprenticeship program.
So, you said you had to partner with an agency, another agency?
Well, one of the partners, I believe, is, the local community college actually has such a program. Where's Dave? Dave, is that correct?
Well, actually, we're working with...
You got to come through the mic.
Yes.
Actually, we're working with Mike Alexander with the apprenticeship program. We currently have about four vacancies, tree trimmers, in our agency, and we want to convert those over to apprentice, bring some people in and train them. And by the way, I also started as apprenticeship tree trimmer, so, I'm advocating for it.
Thank you. So, Director Moore, I just want to make note that you have been here less than a year, and you have took the time to look and search and make an apprenticeship begin and happen, and I need to come around and give you a hug for that.
Me too. Me too. Me too.
There'll be no hugging while I'm chair.
She'll hug him for you.
Look at this. Oh.
Job creation is so important.
Be careful, me too.
You can just hug the vice.
Job creation is so important for us now, especially in the city, and we need to use what you are putting together as an example for these other agencies, to just show how simple, just, you know, assigning someone to just one job spec and just move it along. And you have, so, we want to use what you're doing, and I think, as an example to some of these other agencies, because I, we got kind of emotional at this, at the last hearing that we, I kind of go over this every single year, and it's like a broken record. So, again, thank you, Wreckin Parks, for what you continue to do, and this is about green infrastructure, so, thanks again. I'm finished.
Either Director Moore, Eric, when, when we do planting, tree plantings along the public right of way, who maintains those trees? Both in the initial, I guess, two-year period, or ongoing?
Yeah, you can go ahead, Eric. So, we do both in, what I call in-house planting with city contracts, and then we also partner with a lot of our NGOs. Blue Water Baltimore, occasionally, not so much anymore, Parks and People, Baltimore Tree Trust, Southeast CDC, Midtown Partnership, all of them. And we require, since they're planting on, quote, "our land," our right-of-way, regardless of who's planting it, there's at least a two-year maintenance and establishment and warranty period. That usually gets the trees off on the right start. The challenge is, is we're trying to get to a 30, you know, 40 percent tree canopy cover in a couple of decades here, is making sure we do proper maintenance after that period. And that's been the challenge since I've been here. We're working with BOP now to have a contract come out, since we don't have quite enough staff as we would like to have, and have a contracted crew that'll come along and pick up the loose ends where there's perhaps a tree that's faltering after that two- to three-year establishment period.
No, thank you, and I was hoping to hear that, because I think that's a tremendous opportunity for us to maybe explore developing an MBE, WBE that could really take on that work. It could really enhance, you know, either, you know, small land... It could really enhance, you know, either, you know, small landscape or some development of a business.
I agree. We actually looked in that, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill and Jenny, with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, to see whether or not we could have a workforce development crew go that way, and that's still a possibility. Regardless, we're moving forward, we're going to, I'm working with the BOP people later this week to ensure that we're hiring locally, underserved neighborhoods, and regardless, we're gonna have jobs go to the people right here in the city who need jobs.
Okay, yeah, we'd like to hear more about that. So what I'm gonna ask is, Director Moore, if you can, being that it's after 11:00 now, if you could finish with your full presentation for Wreckin' Parks, that would've been a part of the 11:00 AM panel, and then what we'll do is we'll come back with questions, starting with Council President and then Councilwoman Sneed.
Can I ask Council President one quick question before I proceed? Just one quick second.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll start with our administration.
Are we into the meeting here? Do you know what's the presentation for the full Wreckin' Parks?
So you have to switch it.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
It's administration. We've done those, so.
She has a little bit of-
Yes, ma'am. Why she's turning that up real quick, I just wanna highlight a couple of things from our agency this year. Of course, hopefully all council members should by now have received our summer guide, which was a new publication that we produced this year that lists all of our various programs throughout our summer. Of course, we're excited about what's happening in our FY19 year. We will have Cahill Fitness and Wellness Center off the ground. We're working through final plans for our Miller Branch Wellness and Fitness Center at Cherry Hill. Our Bocheck Fieldhouse renovation is close to starting. Of course, we'll have our Mount Wyoness Nature Center. Our Druid Hill Aquatic Center is on the move, and then, as well as, we're looking at current swimming pools and rec centers that we need to look at ways that we can renovate and upgrade. So going on into administration, our administrative budget, of course, is where our directors' offices house our engineering, our information technology, physical services, human resources, our marketing media, risk, and our capital division is also in that. There is no changes there, same service level. There's a seven hundred thousand dollar reduction, but that was from a grant that no longer is available. Our next service is, of course, our aquatics facility. Currently, we have thirteen neighborhood walk-to pools, three indoor pools, and we have six, what we call our large park pools. We're getting ready to have those ready to go as school is getting out. We did have pools open this weekend at Druid Hill, and we had some mechanical problems on a couple, but we ended up opening indoor pools just to suffice and work that out. As well as what we're seeing here is, we're getting funding from our table games to help support that division. We're adding roughly nine hundred thousand to table games, as well as, of course, we're in the final stages of hiring our lifeguards for the summer, which will be over three hundred plus part-time staff to operate our pools as well. Our next service, of course, is our youth and adult sports. Youth and adult sports is where we house all of our citywide athletic programs, from boxing, football, basketball, track and field, you name it, so anything that's related to sports. Currently, our, we use the collection from our current fees to help cover the cost of our operations of some of our programming within that area, but outside of that, we're maintaining the same current level of service. Community rec centers, of course, is one of our largest divisions, largest budgets. We have currently forty-three rec centers that are in operation. Of that, as I stated earlier, one point six million will be used to help with operations from table games. Also, there's a three hundred thousand dollar increase to help support and increase staffing for our VRI sites, as we all know, as well as to look at ways that we can fund some of our other current rec center operations. Special Facility Management is one of our, what you would call almost an enterprise fund. There's money that's generated from our various facilities. Those facilities range from Mount Pleasant, Mimi de Pietro, Myers Pavilion, we receive funding from the Burns Arena, the Driving Range, Miller Branch, Upton Boxing Center, our nature center, and of course, we all know, back in February, we opened Shake and Bake, which had been closed in September, and we're starting Phase Two renovations of the Bowlin Alley that we plan to have operating in up by March of, or spring of nineteen. Horticulture, in our Horticulture Division, we're maintaining our current levels. There is, of course, on the Horticulture, they operate our Severn Arboretum, our Volmer Center, as well as Peter Rollins Conservatory, it's all under that division. Recreation for seniors, in that program, there was a slight change, I believe what we did was we moved staffing that was initially on the recreation, we moved them, went directly under the senior center operations. Currently, our program serves seniors ages fifty and over. We have ninety-four Golden Age Clubs, various tournaments and special events throughout the city as well. And also, we will use some of that one point six million from our table games to support our senior programming. Therapy Recreation is gonna maintain its current levels. Therapy Recreation is the division that deals with our youth and adults who have special needs throughout our city. That program is based out of our Fair and Baybrook Rec Center. Park Programming and Events is where our kayaking program is housed, as well as our volunteer program. And currently, we manage about two thousand permits per year in our special events, as well as we're, this is also gonna be the home where we're now overseeing the Afram, five-dollar five Ks throughout the city, as well as, y'all should've received a brochure by our Rhythm and Reels, over a hundred and fifty events throughout the summer. And that's it.
Council President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to commend the Department of Wrecking Parks on doing a good job of opening up the rec centers when the schools were out of heat. That was a great partnership, it went very smooth. I just wanna thank the department and all its employees for the great job you've done in terms of opening up the rec center so kids can have a safe place and a warm place to be. And I wanna thank Forest Street for doing all the great work that they do, and Bob Wall, all you guys do a good job. So I just want you to keep, I just want you to keep up the good work, because if we can get our kids into the rec centers, we can save so many kids. So only thing I would say is, put together a committee of young people and ask them what they would like to see in the rec centers to get them in the rec centers, 'cause I think we can get more youth in the rec centers if we find out exactly what it is they want in a rec center. And if it takes the funding to do that, we're gonna look at how we can get that funding. And y'all just do a good job, and thank you, that's all I have.
Director Moore, I just had a quick question related to aquatics. If you look at the performance measures related to total number of visitors to our outdoor pools-
What page, sir?
Page four twenty-seven.
Okay.
So from FY15 to, I guess, present, we've had over a hundred thousand less visitors to pools. What's going on? And I know, I know you're new on the scene, but, I mean, I know, I know the pool-
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask Darryl, who just slid up, he heard that question coming, and he's gonna tell you.
Okay, the decrease in numbers indicate, we had Read to Succeed Camp, which was Baltimore City Public Schools. They had a hundred and twenty kids who swam three times a week at our locations, so they stopped coming. So I'm not sure what they did with those kids. As well, as we had a Learn to Swim program for the recreation center, so you had three hundred, thirty-five hundred kids who came twice a week. So now they only come once a week for regular open swim. So when you add those numbers up, they're pretty significant.
And they didn't give us any sense of why those two programs stopped utilizing?
Well, Baltimore City Public Schools was the Read to Succeed Camp. So I'm not exactly sure why, but they had a lot of kids, well over a hundred thousand kids who came to our facilities multiple times during the summertime. So I'm not sure what they did with the kids, but they're no longer in Read to Succeed.
Okay.
I'm gonna increase the numbers by, you go in and I swim.
I'll go when you go.
Well, I'd be happy to teach both of you guys to swim if you don't know how to.
Anyway.
We can have a competition.
Thank you, but, I mean, those are, you know, whether they're in the school system or Wreckin' Parks, they're all our kids, so we need to figure out where those kids are going and make certain that the asset is really being utilized to its fullest. So if we can inquire, you know, with, I guess, more detail with the school system on, okay, what's, and we will ask them as well, you know, what other enrichment, what other activities are they providing for these kids? Because we're ready to, as you said, we're ready to serve them, and we've got plenty of opportunities, so thank you. Councilwoman Sneed?
Thank you, I'm just curious about the, going back to trees and environment, so when a tree is pulled out essentially, or when it dies, and a neighbor is screaming saying they don't want another tree there, who cements that part of the property, the sidewalk?
It's a combined effort between DOT footways and ourselves. We have taken in-house, and we have on occasion cemented back over a tree pit, which, of course, I hate to see happen, but when we do it, we do it. We have one, I think it's on East Randall Street or something, coming up, and the DOT, Bike Camper from DOT Footway is gonna take care of that one for us.
How long is that process normally?
I don't know. I'd like to say it's quick, but sometimes if we're at the mercy of their, when they can work it into their contract, I think when it's a priority, it's usually done that same season. It should be done in the spring if somebody, you know, if that directive came down in the spring.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Oh, sorry, Councilman's life.
All right, it's past eleven o'clock, so I'm gonna resume my questioning. So who in Wreckin' Parks has been here the longest?
You, Bob.
Bob.
This room, yes, well, there's some folks that's been here longer than that.
All right, Bob. The award-winning Bob, I was at the Orioles game the other week, and Bob received a community service award, so congratulations on that. So Bob, maybe you can shed some light on this map that I have over here, just had it printed. My assistant, Shakurad, in the back, will hand one of these to each one of you, 'cause seeing is believing. I had trouble believing it when people were talking to me about it when I was door knocking, but I guess the map doesn't lie. Why does the FIT district, why is the FIT district the only district in Baltimore City without a rec center? Do you know? Like, give me some historical-
I don't have any historical data with that.
You don't have any answer, okay. So, 'cause I mean, I'm looking through this map here, and literally, every single district has a rec center, including Mr. Dorsey's, he's got this one up here in the corner, and he's got a, what's, he's got a spray pad. I'm not sure what a spray pad is, but we don't, we don't have, it says spray pad, we don't have one of those either. But anyways, my point is like this, you know, the FIT district's diverse, there's communities with all different variety of needs. I have communities in-
We need one.
Shakurad, can you give one to the president? So I have communities that need rec centers just as bad as many communities that already have rec centers, and so, you know, I don't wanna rehash the past as to why the FIT district has been neglected and why the FIT district is a recreational desert, but fortunately, the FIT district now has the director who's gotta come and go from the FIT district every single day, who drives through it and sees that we have a recreational desert. And there's communities, I don't wanna start naming ones, but I'm happy to show them to you offline, that desperately need recreational activities, and there's great spots in the district for such activities. And so, you know, the kids in the FIT district certainly deserve better, and I think together we can do better and get them some recreational activities so that we don't have the corner of the city being a recreational desert. And so, you know, I'm quite actually surprised with how inexpensive rec centers are by looking at the budget, and so I think it's a very, it's a very reasonable request to find a way to have a recreation center in the FIT district, so that we don't have a map that looks like this, neglecting the whole top-left corner of the city.
Okay, so before you interject, Director Moore, and I'm gonna give you an opportunity, I'm gonna ask if Councilwoman Middleton would just take a moment, 'cause we're not gonna stay on this, so just take a moment-
Yeah, I just like to-
To give some historical perspective on-
Right.
On how the districts were aligned.
So if we remember, there were at one time three-member districts redesigned for three members per district, and I guess when it was carved into single-member districts, you know, it was, it basically worked that way, that there was, as you're mentioning, Councilman, no rec center, but there are rec centers in close proximity, like C.C. Jackson, which is definitely on Park Heights Avenue, and I guess you can also reference where that cutoff line was, is, Southern Park Heights has no library, you know, Pratt Public Library, so it's kind of a similar thing with the redistricting as far as council districts. But when it was a three-member district and included, you know, it, rec centers were there, so, you know, I just wanted to kinda put that historical perspective out there as well, and you're definitely, the people in the fifth, on that fifth district side are definitely welcome to come to C.C. Jackson or-
Right. Wait, 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 thank you, Vice President Middleton. So Director Moore, if you, I'm gonna give you an opportunity to respond.
To Councilman Yersey's question, I mean, what we're doing as an agency right now, if you all know, we're putting together a strategic plan, and we're looking at a master plan for all of our facilities, and looking at all of our various rec deserts throughout the city, 'cause there are several locations. I agree, there's not one in the FIT district, but there's other amenities in other areas of the city, so what we're trying to do is look at this from a holistic perspective and figure out what is our best way of how we tackle some of those, but duly noted, I think you definitely shared with me as well, your concern, so we are definitely looking into these various things.
And I just want to end with this, is that I do appreciate the historic context from my colleague. You know, there has been, when we talk about libraries, thanks to my colleague, she has actually helped in securing a new library in Park Heights, and so, you know, we are moving in the right direction, but the same way that there's a need for a library in Park Heights where there was one that had been closed, which I think was very close to C.C. Jackson, right at Caddy Corner?
Right across.
There had been a library back in the day, I don't know how or why it got closed, but the same way, it's very difficult to get from there to the Pratt Library that exists on Rice's Town Road, even more so, people who live by, you know, in Grove Park and Arlington or even Howard Park are not, they can't get to C.C. Jackson, they can't get to James Gross that are, you know, both right next to each other, and so those kids in those communities, the proximity based on where they live is causing them to not have these opportunities, and I'd be glad to take you and show you what these kids are doing instead. They're riding dirt bikes around the streets, they're, you know, there's a lot of, there's high crime in certain areas, and these kids are just looking for something to do, and I think it's our responsibility to give them these programming in those communities, and so I do look forward to working with you on that.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Dorsey? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Council President?
Yeah, you know, we have schools up there in his district that we can look at a partnership and get some recreational into one of the schools by partnering with the school system, but I just want the Councilman to know that we're gonna go through redistricting again, so it's a possibility that you might get one carved in your district, 'cause we're gonna redo redistricting again.
Well, again, it's not about where the lines are, it's about where the kids are, and the kids in the top corner of the city, kids who live in Grove Park-
I said, I said that there's a school that's in that area that Wreckin' Parks can talk to the school system, and we'll, you can ask the school system when they come here, and Recreation Parks can partner with them and have some recreational opportunities in the school, 'cause most of the schools have gyms.
And I'll just add what you're saying, Council President, I got a note here, northwest, I think that school's gonna be vacated, and they've reached out to us, asked us, do we have any interest, so we'll definitely follow up on that discussion as well.
So there's thirty minutes left in this panel, I'm gonna ask that we stick to our questions, not a whole lot of comments- not a whole lot of commentary, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, where are we with Camp Small? So I know where we are with Camp Small, I wanna know if we've got money in the budget to bring Camp Small into its full operational capacity that it really should be at, to save the city money, to make the city money, and to do with that space and the operation what it can, what it's capable of. Do we have money allocated in the budget for the specific equipment and personnel that requires for Camp Small to take the next step? What I know is that we need a grinder that's probably gonna cost $300,000 to $400,000. We need a lift that's got a rotator so that we can move full trees around, that's gonna cost $200,000 to $250,000 probably, and that that will allow us to process the hundreds of 30-inch diameter trees that we have sitting around, and that we probably need two person, two full-time employees to help maximize that operation, and that if we did that, we would be able to actually use wood chips that we're producing there on-site instead of spending $100,000 a year on wood chips, so there would be an immediate savings of $100,000 every single year, and that we probably need about $750,000 once in order to get that up and running, and for this to, am I wrong about this?
Well, I'll let Bill answer, but we have not had any extensive conversations of moving forward with funding Camp Small at this point in time. It's something I'll be more than happy for us to start looking at, but of course, we have so many needs within our agency that we have to try to prioritize what we have, but Bill can continue that response.
Thank you, Director Moore. I also know that Camp Small was started with a $98,000 loan from Innovation Fund, and that fund, because of the repayment of successful programs, is gonna have $2.3 million in it this year, and that I'd like for Wreckin' Parks to be first in line to request the money that it needs in order to purchase that equipment, so that, because I know that this is a program that can repay in the time that's allotted for Innovation Fund programs, where we have like five years to repay, so I wanna make sure that Wreckin' Parks is lining itself up to be the first to request that money for that purpose.
And Councilman Eric and I have talked about putting together like a one-page that we can present to the director and make those requests. As you said, it's a huge capital cost, and then after those capital costs for the tub grinder and the loader, you know, maintenance on that stuff is, it's not cheap, plus the diesel costs to run it, the fuel alone, you know, if you talk to anybody that does this stuff, I mean, they spend a lot of money on fuel, but no, you're not wrong, Eric and Sean, who's our person down there at Camp Small, are doing great things, and when we took the dive into this, you know, whatever it was, two or three years ago, we said, let's just put a guy down there, a person down there, and let's see what can happen, and he's doing great stuff, so.
So the program's been really successful.
Yep.
But making this, taking this next step that requires this funding is what, it's what's necessary for us to be doing what every other jurisdiction in the state has already been doing for a long time. We're really handicapping ourselves by just not having this investment made upfront to just get us doing what everybody else already does.
And I don't disagree with you, the only thing I would tell you is that there are some jurisdictions that have the equipment in-house, and then there are some jurisdictions that contract with people to come in and do it, because the capital costs and the maintenance costs are so high, so we're gonna look at whether it makes more sense for the city to buy a tub grinder and a loader, or, you know, to lease it, or to pay somebody to come in and do it, but we're definitely gonna explore all that.
Right now, we're accumulating trees that we've gotta pay to have taken away periodically.
Sean is working on how he can make that a zero-sum game, and he's having success, some success doing that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilman. Director, I'm gonna take a moment to break kinda my cardinal rule of the budget hearings and not talk about district-specific issues, and first, I'm sorry I was out there dealing with another matter related to budget hearings, I wanna thank all of you for what you do, I really do enjoy working with you guys, Eric and Bill and Bob and everyone on the team, Rashawn, appreciate it, Adam, sorry, I just go through the whole list of all you. We were gonna hire a park steward at Seton Hill Park, and I don't know whose shop that falls under, but long story short, it didn't happen, there were some hiring issues, and you can address this for Seton Hill Park, but when we have an immediate need, so this, I'll loop it in citywide, when we have an immediate need like that, a park steward at a park, and something goes wrong in the HR process or in the hiring process, what opportunities do we have to do some type of backfill to make sure that that need is met while the HR process continues to play out, so that we get the right person in there? Who can address that, and if you can touch on the Seton Hills situation and what we can do in the meantime at St. Mary's Park?
Yes, of what the Seton Hills situation, we had a person that made it almost all the way through our hiring process, for whatever reason, we couldn't bring him on, and as a supplemental, the district manager has been sending his crew out there to keep the park and maintain it, we're working with the church across the way, they're gonna recommend someone that we can hire to put at Seton Hall, at Seton Park, and moving forward, we just attended the high school job fair, we got a bunch of applications, we're gonna be bringing some of those people in as park stewards, as seasonal maintenance aide, the issue is that we're not really getting a lot of people to apply for those positions, because they're seasonal for two years, and it's minimum wage, but we're reaching out to the high school class, so hopefully we can get some people in.
So just to summarize, one, on the St. Mary's Park issue, you're gonna continue to backfill with other staff?
Yes.
And you're gonna be diligent and committed to that until you're able to hire someone new?
Yes, sir.
And then that's what we do citywide, and then I think if you could send us that information to the council, to the committee, if we can make that a request, Marguerite, on those seasonal jobs, I'm pretty sure I speak for everyone, we'll push that information out to our respective communities and then Council President, citywide, to make sure that we're doing everything we can to help you guys attract some, you know, right talent to help you with your mission, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so what number was that, Marguerite? We're in the 30s right now, but Director Moore, if you can make sure we get that information on that job, and now Councilman Cohen.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, thank you, Director, appreciate the work you all do, especially big challenge with lighting in Patterson Park, and we seem to have been moving in a good direction there, so wanna just say I appreciate that. I am concerned about this coming summer, we're looking at potentially a couple thousand kids that will not have youth works jobs that applied for youth works, so I wanna know from you all, from Wreckin' Park, what is the plan to make sure our kids, especially our teenagers, have something to do, are in constructive activities, because as we all know, we're coming out of what remains a still very violent year in Baltimore, and making sure our young people have safe, constructive places to go and to play and to, you know, hang out is critically important, so that they do not get caught up. So, specific to this summer, is there a plan around keeping kids safe? And I realize that your budget is not increasing enough to really do much for our kids, and I think that's something we should all acknowledge, but with the resources you have, what's the plan for this coming summer?
Well, I'll start by saying that we're looking at, of course, we have summer camp for our 14 and unders, and so I assume you're talking about this 15 to 18 group. We're looking at our sports camps, another thing that we've been talking about is starting, and Rashawn can maybe hit on this, but we want to start an official camp, that we can bring in high school-aged kids, teach them how to become officials. We spend a lot of funds on officiating, paying for officials for different youth sports, so I think that is another source that we can, we're looking at, as well as looking and seeing if there's days that we can bring kids into Shake and Bake during the day. So we're looking at some things, but we're having to be mindful to stay within our budget, but we are planning some things, but I'll make sure that we get you an extensive and detailed report of our plans for our teenage group.
And for kids that don't play sports?
I mean, there's opportunities right now, like we have our robotics program that we're continuing to roll out, we have our drone program, we just finished one pool of centers, and we're getting ready to go to our next set, that's gonna be an opportunity. We're working with DJ Conan from 92Q, we're gonna have a DJ camp, and we're gonna teach kids how to become DJs, and so what would, my, our long-term goal here is to teach them a skill, but also teach them where it could be an opportunity for they may be entrepreneurship opportunities for as well, so that's another option we're looking at, and then we're in the process of looking at bringing back our studio at James McHenry. So we're trying to be creative and look at ways that we can serve all of our kids, athletes as well as non-athletes as well.
Just curious, do you have an inventory of all the nonprofits that work with kids in the summer, whether it's through the camps? I mean, is there sort of a master document where we have a sense of where all of our kids in aggregate are, whether it's through nonprofit activities, camps, sports?
Bill, do we have, I don't recall of one, I know we're working on a strategic plan that's gonna start addressing, as we do swab analysis throughout our city, to look at, you know, what is happening in those areas, but unless we have something recent, Bill, that you can talk about, I don't, we don't currently have one.
We could check, when we were doing the 2015 Recreation and Aquatics Facilities Plan, we did look at all the other providers in the city, and so I would be surprised if it wasn't an appendix to that plan, but we can check.
Okay, I would just put out there, I think it's real important that we have an analysis of where our kids are, that we are factoring in all the free nonprofits, all the for-profit, the camps, everything, but just so that we know where our children are, so that we can then plan around that, again, given the level of violence that kids in our city are exposed to, especially during the summer when they're not in school, so, so important that they have, that we have an inventory, so we know where we can send parents and young people for something safe to do.
Well, we'll get that to you.
Thanks.
Councilman Pinkett?
Director Moore, just real quick, are we having issues with the HVA system at Shake and Bake?
I don't, I haven't, it hasn't, I came across my desk, is that there's a problem at, no? No, no, he's asking if there are HVA cease issues at Shake and Bake, I don't know of any, but let me look into it, because no one has brought that to my attention.
Okay.
But I will definitely look into it and get you an answer.
So that's request 35, can you get back to us, end of the week, just on the status of HVAC at Shake and Bake, please? Thank you. Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you very much, well, I wasn't planning on this, but since we're going local for a minute, I would like to ask why there are only two parks that are losing maintenance funds from what they have currently, and one of them's in my district, it's Clifton Park, the other's Patterson Park, and that is in, so we lost $121,000. Patterson, I didn't, I don't know what you're losing, but everybody else is kinda either staying where they are this year, or they're getting a little more, and I don't think we lost any acreage out of Clifton Park or Patterson Park in the last fiscal year, so we would like our money back, please.
Can somebody speak to, I don't know of us cutting park.
Yeah.
Which page of the budget are you looking at?
Excuse me?
Which page of the budget shows that Clifton and Patterson are? I think I-
I wrote it down.
432?
It's service, oh, it's page 432.
Right. So this service did take a small cut, like 100 or something?
Thousands is a lot.
Pardon me?
For us, 100, whatever it was, is a lot.
Oh, no, that's a lot of money, I don't want it to sound like it's not a lot of money, but when the whole budget is 12 million or something like that, it's, but that went to the Violence Reduction Initiative, but David is not gonna take it out of one place, I mean, he's gonna spread that cut across his whole operation, and so that, you know, I don't know if they just had to make it appear like it came from one place here, like the Clifton Park District, but that's, it's not gonna come from Clifton or Patterson, he's gonna spread that cut over his whole $12 million operation.
I mean, we're in the vi, I mean, we're in the Violence Reduction, at least Clifton Park is.
If I can say, on those cuts that came from parks, it did not impact service itself, we looked at the contract of our current contract, and that reduction came out of our current contract, and what David has stated is wherever we reduce a slight service, it may come down to one or two cuts, so instead of them doing the contract amount of cuts, we may have reduced one cut throughout the city, then his maintenance crew will pick up, but that reduction does not show a significant impact of service, even though you see a dollar amount here, but overall, it's not impacting anything other than our agreement with our contractor, not with our staff.
Okay, I don't understand what you're saying, but that's probably my fault, but you explain it to Mark Washington and to the Civic Works when they all start emailing, okay, and then they'll understand it, but I know I'm not gonna try to explain it to me, to them, because I'm asking for it back.
Yes, sir.
And that's all that's gonna satisfy them if that gets restored, because we don't wanna spread all over the place, we want what we had now, and we're, we got enough violence to earn it, I mean, we're literally in, you know, Clifton Park is literally in one of these Violence Reduction Zones.
Right, but that whole-
So we should have more money, not less.
Right.
Cut that grass and get back on violence.
Can we make sure that someone from your team talks with the Councilwoman, Councilwoman Clark, can we make sure someone talks with the Councilwoman immediately after the hearing to get contact information for Mr. Washington, so we can make that connection? Yep. Director Moore, so just make sure someone talks with Councilwoman Clark, Councilwoman, you're good?
My sec, yeah, all I wanna say is I wanna say a big general thing about rec centers. I would like us, Mr. Chairman, when all these budgets are over, but not long after, to have a meeting about what is the plan for our rec centers, what is the level of staffing we need, what are the add-ons like curfew centers and like VRI add-ons that need staffing, and how do you supplement to meet those demands?
So is this, is this a question, or?
No, well, the question is, okay, if we have, I mean, basically, I'm asking the director of Wreckin' Parks if he will begin to put the information together. Mr. Moore, you're so, you're new here, and we appreciate everything you're doing, and how fast you're doing it, but we got this monster-like rec need out there, and we gotta, we gotta put a plan together that's staffing and it's money, and, yeah, we're selling garages, we're leasing garages, but basically, whatever we're doing to garages, it ain't even gonna take care of Rita Church, but basically, we need to know what's going on and what we need to do to run a good, well-funded rec center system across the city, and we need a hearing and a meeting with you. Will you do that with us and prepare for it now?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's probably not best in the Budget and Appropriations Committee, but we can, if you wanna do a resolution, maybe?
I'll be glad to do, yes, I'll be very happy to write a resolution, now, of course, we don't have anyone working in the Department of Legislative Reference anymore, I'll, if they'll take what I draft up and put it in proper form.
Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so I have at least two questions that I'm gonna try to hold it to, because I know time is brief. One is a conceptual one, or maybe a larger one, and let me start by saying, you know, I love you. by saying, you know, I love you. You know, I've been preaching the gospel of youth development the whole time I've been in the council, and you guys are our single biggest opportunity to be relevant in the lives of the kids in the city, other than the school system, which is less under our control. I, so on the one hand, I was really excited for you when I saw that your budget is about 10% higher this year than it was last year, because I think that's a sign that this administration values recreation and parks to a greater extent than the previous administration did. You guys got killed in the last administration financially, and I'm glad to see that that's turning around. What I'm confused a little bit about was, the furthest back I can check easily online is fiscal 13, and in fiscal 13, community recreation centers received $10,386,427. So I was really excited about the fact that this year, you're getting $15,891,470. That's over a 50% increase in the last six years. What I'm confused about is, there were 120 positions in fiscal 13, and there's only 121 positions now. So how did, how did you, can, so my first question, I understand this is one thing you might have to get, put together a more detailed answer for, is, I'm assuming that people in Wrecking Parks haven't gotten 50% raises. So can somebody break down for me and send this to the committee as a request? Consider break down, where did that extra, where has that extra money gone? Is that because?
Councilman, can you clarify what the request is?
The, the request is, of the extra, of the additional $5.5 million that Wrecking Parks is getting for community recreation centers this year compared to six years ago, how much of that has gone to salary increases, and how much of that has gone to something else? And what is that something else? Because it's not fixing up rec centers, because that would be capital.
So, to summarize, can you, can you itemize the difference in the 5.5 million between salary increases and capital improvements at the rec centers? Is that accurate?
Yeah, I mean, and I want to be very clear, this is, I don't mean this critically, I just, I'm just, I don't know where it's going, and I can't tell from the budget book.
So can we expand it to say, because I think if we're going back to FY13, we need to look at how many rec centers operated in FY13 compared to today. So there may not be 43 rec centers that was operated back in FY13. So we've got, look at all that, but we will be more than happy to put that report together for you.
Okay. And that would, that would be fine. If it turns out that there were fewer rec centers, that would explain it, okay. But then the second, but then the question would be, but the positions are so similar, the total number of positions. But then the second question I have, and this is very dear to my heart, it says, under the major budget items in the FY19 budget, that additional funds were transferred from, to other services to fund two centers, Christmas Attics and Walter P. Carter, that were previously closed. So my question there is, Walter P. Carter has been partially open for the last year. Does this mean that Walter P. Carter will now be restored to a full-time recreation program?
We're looking into, yes, I see where we're getting additional funding to fund, but Walter P. Carter is still, has been identified as a satellite site.
So it's still listed as a satellite location. In that case, I'd like to connect this back to my colleague, the councilman from the 5th District, who was concerned about the fact that his district has none. My district has, by that top, by that definition, only one fully functioning recreation program. But on this map, it looks like there are three, because both Leithwalk and Walter P. Carter show up on this map as rec centers. Now, it's difficult to tell whether they're supposed to be colored as alternate provider recreation centers or not. I can tell you that there is no alternate provider at Leithwalk, and there is no city provider at Leithwalk. So I'm not sure why it would be listed on the map at all, unless it's our intention to go back to doing something there. And that, which would be, you know, I would think that would be the goal. I would, I would love to see this whole, this whole council make it one of our budget priorities, to give you the resources to make sure that as many of these centers are open as possible, as fully as possible.
And I'll just note real quick that this map is dated 2015, so it's two years, three years old now. So I think what I would like to do is get you a more updated map. I think that, so we'll know what we're working on.
So that'll be the request. Please get us an updated map. Councilman Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I guess I want to pick up where everyone just left off. Director Moore, I think that, for me, if you look at that map, even knowing, knowing the, where the current centers are, and you know, this is a hot button item for me, it doesn't matter where we are in the city, we know that as they're currently constructed, most of our centers can't even hold the, most of the children that are in their neighborhoods anyway. So we have to be living that in the reality. For example, you know, in my district, even if every child in Frankfurt and Bella Edison wanted to come to Heron Run or Gardenville or Furley, that's not physically possible, because the centers are not built to hold large amounts of children. So that we know, and we know that you guys have a plan to do that, to build the fitness and wellness centers. It's just depending on us to have the courage to make that happen. We're going to later today talk about these garages that, you know, the council president, myself, other members of the council who were here before, believe that the best way to spend that money was to give it to you for your capital plan that you produced, that we knew, we saw how every portion of the city would benefit from, from that plan. So I just want to go on record in saying is that we, what we're talking about right now is fighting for crumbs. That's what we're talking about. And we really should talk about, how can we add meat to the bones for recreation and parks? But with that being said, Mr. Director, we've been discussing over the, over the last couple of days here, the amount of money that seems to be just giving to other agencies willy-nilly, even for things that we know that they're not going to do. Perfect example is that we've had the budget director in previous weeks, the police commission, other folks come in and say that, hey, we're going to give in the police department $9 million to hire 100 more police officers. But then when asked if they will actually hire those people, they say, no, we're going to use that money for overtime. Well, I know I think, and I know that my colleagues also think that we know, if we gave you $9 million to serve more kids, we know that that $9 million would go exactly to serving more kids. So could you tell me, because we know our centers are limited in space and time, can you tell me what we could possibly do if we had more investment into the agency as far as more pop-ups, more activities through youth and adult sports, where they could go, physically, we could pay people to go into neighborhoods where there aren't rec centers to operate program, or where we could have more focus in on providing different opportunities. And by the way, I haven't forgotten, I will drop my DJ equipment off next week so that you guys can use it, use it for the program. But can you tell us what you could do with an amount of money like that? For example, just $9 million, what, where could we go? What kind of programming could we provide for our young people throughout the year? Because we have to remember that that's a baseline. That means once that $9 million is there, is there every year for you, for someone to use.
And what I would like to do, Councilman Scott, so I don't just be pulling the spot and give you something that's inaccurate.
Yeah.
What I would like to do is to put together a detailed report of what we could do if it was a $9 million budget increase.
Yep.
And so that way, there is no guessing game. So if you'll give me some time, I'll put that report together.
And thank you. And then my, my last request would be, if you could share, especially for the new members of the council, you know, the plans that you guys shared with the previous council about what, what new centers could be built, which other ones could be renovated, I think that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Robert Stokes?
I thought I had to raise my hand. Mr. Moore, first of all, I want to thank your staff, the direction that you're taking in Wrecking Center, with the rec centers in. And we also talked about rec councils. I think that's so important, because you partnership with business, you bring the community in, and I think that's something should, your staff should look at. Also, we have lost our seniors when, when the senior program was put into the health department. And myself, and Mr. Moore, and Councilwoman Clark have been talking about, and with my colleagues in the mayor's office, how do we have that conversation and take our senior program out of the health department, put it in Wrecking Parks, because you have the infrastructure and the staff? Because right now, it's actually lost over there in the health department, because they have some bigger issues they're dealing with. And I also want to mention, when I made Chick Webb Historic last year, a friend of mine who I grew up with, Dennis Chambers, who plays with Carlos Santana, and he actually gave me a set of brand-new pearl drums to donate to Wrecking Park. So I'm looking forward to maybe Wrecking Park's getting a staff person there to teach our young people how to play drums. Just, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Councilwoman Middleton, and colleagues, to just remind everyone, we have two minutes left in this portion, so if we could try and make our questions as brief as possible. Oh, yeah, I'm going to, and then we've got lunch from 12 to 12:30, and then at 12:30, I emailed everyone on the council, we're doing a bit of an audible, but we're moving the Neighborhood Impact Investment Fund up, because we know there's going to be a lot of questions about that. So we wanted to dedicate an entire hour and a half, as opposed to just half hour. Councilwoman Middleton?
Just two quick statements for parks. Thanks for bringing up Camp Small, because that has been years of development and, and meeting with the neighborhoods, particularly the Woodbury neighborhood and the watchdogs of that forestry area. There's been a good partnership and meetings and answering questions and just moving forward with, you know, that area over there, also getting ready for development. And the other statement, I guess for the horticulture section, there's a, you know, horticultural, horticultural, the flower part of it, you know, developing flowers and the, the clubs that do flowers, there's one strong, primarily African-American horticulture, I think it's Four Ash Win, and they have, I guess, to continue to preserve their existence. They are also now doing fundraisers and things, and they are also partnering with the agricultural department at Morgan State University, building a partnership there to do some extraordinary things in the communities and at park areas, primarily in our African-American communities. We know that that segment of horticulture is primarily Caucasian, and, you know, a lot of those clubs are just, that's just the way history has been. So I think it's important to maybe try to focus on this, again, primarily African-American organization for help and, and just assistance. And again, it's a, they are a citywide organization, so I just wanted to throw that out there, that that would be a good partnership, especially since they're also partnering with Morgan State University. Any comment on that?
I would just say that I'm well aware of Four Ash and their garden club and their activity up at Silver and Arboretum, and they've been great partners up there. And I'll mention it to Melissa to make sure she reaches back out to them and offers her whatever support that she can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last question, Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Chairman. Council president wanted me to bring this to your attention, if it's not. Question is around, who's responsible for removing, I guess, tree debris in the, I guess, in the parks? He, in his tour of various parks, he's noticed a significant amount of downed trees and dry trees, and, you know, commenting on the timeliness of us removing, you know, that debris, so that there's not any potential, you know, fire or any other type of hazard related to that. So can somebody speak to, to our efforts along that line?
Well, and Bill can add what I missed out on, but we spoke after that last, that first windstorm, we put together a plan, and of course, the immediate was, I had to get, take care of all the emergencies on the streets and those things first. But our forest division is working with our park maintenance division now to make sure they get all these trees out and removed from our parks. That is the plan. But Bill, you want to add something to that?
No, the director pretty much hit it. I mean, forestry really has all the muscle, so they take care of all the big stuff. David has some capacity, and so he kind of takes care of a lot of the small stuff. But between the two of them, we hope to hit everything in a timely manner. But as the director said, when there is a storm, we have to clear roads first, and unfortunately, the parks sometimes kind of take a backseat.
Okay. And Chairman, if I can just ask one more question that just came to me. I know Director Moore, both you and I, we talked about this maybe a couple of weeks ago, in reference to the work that's happening in Dreward Park around the reservoir, and the potential that people would see the park as a cut-through, you know, traffic that's trying to get off of Dreward Park Lake Drive, and will see the park as a, maybe a convenient way to, to avoid some of that traffic. Have there been further discussions with Department of Transportation about installing speed humps, or assisting in installing speed humps in the park? And, and what efforts are we collaborating on to, to make certain that the park remains a safe environment for pedestrians?
Yes, sir. We're working, and Michelle and her, and Frank came over and actually did a ride through the park with us, so we understand the importance of us addressing that, because we're starting to see some increased traffic now in that park. So we want to go ahead and get on top of that. So we are working on that. Yes, sir.
Okay. So if we can add just another question, I just want to follow up on the plan to address pedestrian safety in Dreward Hill Park. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate everything that you guys do, and looking forward to hearing back from your responses to those questions soon. And have a great day. We will reconvene at 12:30 PM sharp.